Welcome to our second night, for special meeting. Come with me, please, dear Bibles, if you will, to the book of Romans, chapter eight, and that's our text. Romans, chapter eight, and verse eleven. One of Amadeus' verse into our psyche, they customize this for us. And we'll read it not but if we read the same spirit. Romans, chapter eight, and we'll read from the same spirit. The spirit of him that raised up Jesus from the dead dwells in me, dwelling in me. He that raised up Christ from the dead shall also quicken our mortal bodies by his spirit that dwelt in us. Now we are personalizing. He that, the spirit of him that raised up Jesus from the dead dwells in me. He that raised up Christ from the dead shall also quicken my mortal body by his spirit that dwelt in me. Amen, amen, amen. One can argue that well the spirit that raised Christ from the dead dwell in us, why come, how come it does in certain ways? How come something is happening to me? Where the spirit is? One can argue that well the spirit that raised Christ from the dead dwell in us, why come, how come it does in certain ways? How come something is happening to me? Where the spirit is? 5 Hebrews, chapter eleven, there is. I want to read one verse, verse six. Have you found it kind of reached within you, any faith?
Verse six, sir?
Yes, please.
But without faith it is impossible to please him. For he that commit to God must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder of them that diligently seek him.
Amen. But without faith it is difficult to please him.
Impossible.
It is what?
Impossible.
It's impossible to please him. For he that commit unto God must believe that he is. And he is a rewarder of them that diligently seek him. As I meditated on this thing last night, was in my bed, like, I'm meditating on it. The spirit of God brought some things to my remembrance. And I remembered spiritism. And the Lord showed me a contrast between the people in spiritism and the people in church. Now, one of the words used in spiritism very often is the word acknowledge. And they speak about acknowledging their entries. Acknowledging the spirits. He that commit unto God must believe that he is. Those people believe with all their hearts that those spirits are. And they believe that if they do what the spirit says, they will be rewarded. They believe with all their hearts. You tell somebody something that boys may say after ask the spirit. Their reliance and dependence is on the spirit. And even if they can't hear the spirit for themselves, they go to somebody who can hear the spirit. And hear what the spirit says, I come to hear what the spirit says concerning X, Y, Z. Now think of the word of God and think of how we consider what the word of God says. But so he that commit unto God must think it to be true that he is. Now why we don't see the spirit move in us? Do you really think it to be true the spirit of God lives inside of you? And I answer maybe most times is no, for two reasons, one, what you were told. That the spirit don't dwell in dirty temples. So if you got some stuff that feel, you feel dirty in a temple, you know you want the acknowledgement that no spirit of God dwell inside of you. And we miss the fact that he, that he, he does in us by grace. Now whatever you don't acknowledge, what you don't acknowledge will not manifest in your life. You will never have a manifestation of that which you fail to acknowledge. A simple thing is that if you have a word, that you have favor, or you say, I give you favor. And you acknowledge that the man of God gave me favor, when you go, you get through. Why? Because you're an acknowledgement of that word. And because you acknowledged and believed in and relied on, the word worked for you. Look at somebody and say, it's what you acknowledge. If you're gonna benefit your life. The spirit of God lives in us. How I know, the Bible says so. I don't feel nothing, you don't have to feel anything, the Bible says so. God is not a man that you can lie, if God says so, then it is so. Well, the spirit of God lives inside me, why not, you know, I ain't feel nothing happening. Jesus was on earth in his own hometown and nothing happened. Because they did not acknowledge him. Let me give a quick example. How many persons can testify or attest that sometimes you can't find your keys, or you can't find something? And you say, Holy Spirit, the keys. And two seconds after you find it. Anybody know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Now why you found it? Because you acknowledged it.
Yes.
The Bible says, God said, acknowledge me in what?
In all your ways.
And what he's gonna do? How, how, how often do we acknowledge him? So guess, the problem is not the spirit, the problem is us. Our failure to acknowledge that he's in us. The first thing has to happen, we have to come to a place to acknowledge, write a word on, acknowledge him. In all other ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your path. Now, if we don't acknowledge him, acknowledge means to, I put it this way, act like you know. That you know and you're confident he's here, check the definition for acknowledge. Let's see what it say. Why they giving you a definition, act like you know he's there. Because in spiritism, the people acted like they know, they didn't see any spirit, but they behaved like they know the spirit is here.
Admit, answer, grant, allow, concede, confess, own, appreciate, recognize, realize.
You see that?
Go along with, bow to, respect.
You see? We have to acknowledge the spirit, you can't behave stupid, you don't know the spirit is here. Acknowledge the spirits, that's where we belong in spiritism. We've got to bring that and decide that I'm gonna acknowledge the power of God in me. You see, God is never separated from his spirit or his power. But you know, this is a whole new area of operation for us, because we're not accustomed to doing that. We are not accustomed to acknowledging the spirit of God is there. And some of us, we find it a little difficult to acknowledge because of religion. See, religion made you feel that he's only there when you singing. Come Holy Spirit, breathe on me, rest of God. Got a quiet light of the morning sky. And then when we left home, we'd be no, he's here. But he is right there when you're causing your neighbor. He right there. Because my Bible tells me he's never gonna leave you, he's not forsaken. So the spirit of raised Christ from the dead dwells in you and dwells in you forever. You must come to the place, Bible says, he that commit unto God must believe that he is, you have to think it to be true. That he is. How do I think it to be true? I have to train myself to think it to be true. I can tell you, when you first go into spiritism, you don't see anything, so you are not trained to behave and to respect the spirits, you are not. But after a while, you came to the place, you know certain doors you don't go through in your church. That door is left for the spirit. Certain things you don't do, you don't go through this, or through in a particular way. You understand? So after a while, you are unquestionably convinced that the spirit is there. Think it to be true, Bible says, you must believe that he is. To acknowledge is to say yes to, is to agree with. Is to pay respect to. Now, when we begin to do that, which you will begin to do, now let me tell you, you have to train yourself to do that. Could I say, say, write a word on train, say train?
Train.
You have to train yourself to acknowledge spiritual things, because it's not natural to you. You know, do you know why the Bible said Prophet is not gonna be accepted in his own country among his own people? Because people are not trained to regard spiritual things. So they see things naturally, they won't, they see it. So Ju- Jesus' brothers knew him, little boy. And they could not see who he was. Now, the disciples who walked with him after seeing some certain things, Peter, when he caught the fish, he said, go away from me. Just don't go, just don't run me. I'm a sinful man.
Yes.
In other words, he was just talking with himself, he was saying who Jesus was, he was saying, you, ain't nobody like you.
That's right.
He was acknowledging who he was. A black man's who he was part of. He was like, there, there, Jesus, son.
Yes.
I went like that. It's very good way. And because they did not acknowledge him, they could not receive the power that he had. So because you didn't see some things in your life, that's no reason to think he is not there. Now your eyes are big, woman, they realize, because I didn't acknowledge him. Think of the time, every time you ask, you can't find your keys, one night we were looking for the keys upstairs, my car key. I was searching, oh, oh, can't find the key. Searching my, ah, searching. And then I said, where's, where the keys? The words were now right out of my mouth, and I turned around, and I pushed my hand right to the side of the chair and picked the key.
Glory to God.
I can't tell you, I heard a voice, but I turned around, pushed my hand right there, the key had fallen inside the chair, the chair, I pulled the key out. It was that fast.
Praise God.
You would think that after that, I've been great enough. To acknowledge him all the time. No, still a lot of time, I keep buzzing my brain. Let me tell you something. I have seen over and over and over, when I open my mouth, some sort of things happen. So we looking at cricket all day. Twenty twenty. The team, who is batting? Then they have two wickets down, she, I don't know, but anyhow, two wickets down, and I think about it. Ten more, fifty run, fifty, ten more runs to win. The game, as far as you concerned, in twenty twenty matches, and you had about, let's say, twelve balls, ten runs, something like that. And I will open my mouth and say. Two wickets far is another story. The next ball won God, the next ball won God. So I'm saying, I didn't really mean it. And you know the last game? You go, they watching me, she said, it's you, grab your music. I s- I, I just said. No, you think I would learn it? So we have to train ourselves, that's why we have to train yourself. We have to become spirit conscious. You have to become spirit conscious. Listen, he is there, he is our parochial. He's also, he quit motion, water bottle, he's also the parochial, he's the one called alongside to help. The Bible says, the Lord is a very present help in a time of trouble, he's always there to help. No matter what kind of trouble you catch yourself in. Well, guess what we do? He call everybody else except him. And he can fix any circumstance. No matter what deep the trouble is, he can take you up. He can take us up. He that commit unto God must believe that he is. You have, we have to start living a life where we are forever conscious, more and more conscious of his presence.
Amen, praise God.
More and more conscious of his presence. I have to put something all the way, because this is one of the things that stifers the church and stifers people. Because they think that he is present because we're good. Turn to Ephesians, chapter three verse, I want to read something from Ephesians, chapter three. From verse fourteen, Paul, the apostle Paul praying for the church, and I pray this prayer may be for us, as you read, let us pray, send this need to me, for me, Lord. Read from verse eleven, please, from verse, what I told you. Fourteen, please.
For this cause I bow my knees unto the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, of whom the whole family in heaven and earth is named, that he would grant you according to the riches of his glory, to be strengthened with might by his spirit in the inner man, that Christ may dwell in your hearts by faith, that he, being rooted and grounded in love, may be able to comprehend with all saints what is the breadth and length and depth and height, and to know the love of Christ, which passeth knowledge, that he might be filled with all the fullness of God.
Stop. Want to point out a couple things, that Christ may dwell in your hearts by what?
Faith.
Oh, Christ may dwell in our hearts?
By faith.
By faith. By faith. That Christ may dwell in our heart by faith. In other words, we will experience the manifestation of Christ in our hearts by faith. By faith, by our faith. By our willingness to believe the word of God that he's inside of us, he is there. And according to Ephesians too, that we are saved by grace through faith. That is a gift we don't deserve. Because many times that's what you stumble, you think that they need to deserve the spirit of God to live in me. And so after I course, or I did whatever, then I, I feel the spirit, and religion messes up.
Yes, sir.
Religion tells you the spirit departed from you. Because he did X, he did Y, so the spirit is no longer with you. Here the Bible says. We are going to comprehend all things that is the breadth and length and depth and height, and to know the love of Christ, which passeth knowledge. You know, we don't, we don't know the love of Christ. We sing it. He looked beyond my focus and saw my. Do we believe it? Not believe it. You see? So when we mess up, we think that we're so supposed to be punished. Because we're still operating by the law of sin and death in our minds. When you understand how much God loves you. Isn't it? You think a baby knows that they mess up the diaper or the, you think they know that, oh, you think they think about that? You think they think about urinating? See? Let me tell you one of the severe ways that I mess up. You know what God said about Adam? The man has become as much like one of us, knowing good from evil. Is the knowledge of good from evil got messed up? I want to teach you a secret. To really walk and experience the best of God, you have to stop knowing good from evil. It is something called holy indifference. You come to a place of holy indifference. You don't look at it that way. Look at it from a place of holy indifference. How many persons would have thought, would you think they would have called? If the neighbors had learned that Mary being withdrawn to Joseph, the girl was pregnant and Joseph didn't touch her, was it good or evil? Say again? The elders would have called it, and the elders would have ordered her stoned.
Was everyone to put her away?
Because in all essence, that's evil.
Yes.
You understand?
Yes, sir.
And God says, Jacob, if I hated these, I love this, is it good or evil? God said, go in there, kill all this, kill all this, is it good or evil? A man who thought he know more than God saw, said, but I think of it, you know, it make no sense, kill this, kill this.
Yes, yes.
We can make alliance with them.
Tremendous work.
You see, the more spiritually you become, the more you begun to see life in a different way. The more you arrive at a state called holy indifference. God tell a prophet, walk, make it.
That's right.
He tell an arrow, marry a prostitute.
That's right.
Good or evil? A man gave his only son to die for you and me, good or evil? Was that good or was that evil? I have one person say, what kind of cruel God will save his son? Was it for good or was it for evil? Joseph, being thrown in a pit and then sold as a slave. Good or evil? Then a woman lied on him, and he found himself in jail, good or evil? Joseph, at the end of the day, say, you men, they were evil God, men, they were good. Watch me, only God know good and evil, and leave good and evil to God. That's why Bible says, judgment be done unto God.
Yes, sir.
Shalom, no sick, you understand? Leave good and evil to God. You don't, we don't understand, we don't understand. You know what things I do? And the human inside you, you know, we always, we pick the judge. Not the right thing, but we could, you do it. You hear what I'm saying, we, one of the things I, I tell people, that's the two persons I want to argue on, who said, they said, who said this? I teach them a secret, I say, listen, see as far as I recall, or I, I think I understood you to say so, don't call nobody a liar. Don't say a liar, don't say, don't say. I say, man, well, I may have misunderstood you, but I understood you to say X, Y, Z. Unless you have a recording. They said, let me show you, listen to what you said. And then that person said, that's not my voice. But then the person not a liar, a sick person. The man who was caught to the pride in his hand, in his pocket, the man marked the money, when they found him. Say you have money, he said, no. He put his, he said, push it on your pocket, he put it, put all the money. He said, look at this money, he said, that's not me hand. Put that hand down there. So some people say, but it's quite. I train myself to say, I don't understand.
Amen, amen.
God understands. As a human being, you're angry. And you fire the hook. Or shout it after, say, you know. I don't understand everything.
Amen, wonderful.
I like that minimum understand. You see, the, the, this issue of good and evil. Somebody found, they said, let's say somebody say, I was walking and I see this person drop this wallet. I opened it, I wanted to talk to others. My language went something, and I just take the money. Good or evil? You know, a person should judge that. Now, because you have returned it, you won't call the person evil. You can call him evil. How we know that the person wasn't saved from committing sin, you say? Because who was facing them, they had no answer, they get an answer. How we know? You call them, won't call them a scam, come. Somebody give, oh, give you back the wrong change or give you extra money when you pay. Person testified they walk, don't call him evil. You may have been in a position to return, that's all right. Don't judge the person based on that. That's what God said, put my line out in everybody's heart. So he said, judge that, you, you can't, you can't judge, you can't judge. Now, what we do, we judge ourselves, I'll tell the teachers, don't judge yourself. Don't judge yourself. Well, then judge yourself, God, thank you for your goodness and your grace, thank you. Thank you, I'm saved by grace. Because that's the thing that prevent you from, one of the things that prevent you from acknowledging the person of, the Holy Ghost, acknowledge the power of God from inside of you, because you start, you start to compare yourself and wonder, am I worthy? When you concluded, I've been made worthy by the blood, then you don't say that anymore. You rejoice and thank God. Because you live inside it. As I spend days with him, this boy remind me of something, one of the things I did in the in Bible school was the tabernacle and more, more so the Ark of the Covenant. But the Ark of the Covenant was made out of wood. It was overlaid outside and inside with gold. It made of acer wood. The glory of God was within. Were made out of wood. Wood speaks of a material that can decay, can rotten. But the glory of God was still there because the glory of God overlated on the outside and, and gold was on the outside and in the inside. We're made of material that can rotten. But the spirit of God is upon you and in you. Are you hearing? Bible says, he put treasures in open vessels. Treasure in open vessels. God put treasures in open vessels. That can break. They fragile, they can break, but God said, put treasure inside. Why am I telling you this? So you can have more confidence that the spirit of God is in you, the power of God is in you. Listen to me, I don't even care if a cousin like a fisherman, the spirit of God is inside of you. Even when a prostitute, the spirit, one should be tried, die for it, the spirit of God is in her, he is, he is in her. But when she go to pasture, he's leave her, no, he don't leave her. So they makes in succession for her. She didn't aware of. You see, he is not there, the spirit of God is not there to control us. It's our party to help us. He will lead us if you allow him. Whether we allow him or not, he don't depart. He that comes to God must believe that God is. We don't, we understand how much God loves you, we understand how much God loves you, how much he loves you, how much Jesus loves you. Paul said, what can separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus? When the parties, powers, no. Trials, tribulations, things past, things succumb to you, he said, nothing shall separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus, listen to me, nothing. Before you can have the confidence, you have to understand and have this confidence that nothing in this world can separate from the love of God in Christ Jesus.
Praise God.
He dwells in our heart by faith. In order, we have the manifestation of him because we choose to believe that he is there. You see? God's not gonna bully us. He don't want to say, I'm here, so you do so, do so. Listen, one of the things I discovered, man, I got saved. It's a spirit and spiritism. People, people submitted to him by fear. Because they were afraid of him. Listen. And the word I use, they frighten the spirits. They call the spirit, they even beat them. That you like to sleep? If we say, let's die, the spirit will kill us, man. Of course. Ask me a little. No, the Holy Ghost don't do that.
Praise God.
He's the Holy Spirit. He's the spirit of God, he's the spirit of grace. People in spiritism, they are afraid of the spirit. They don't do whatever they do because they want to, rather do it because they're hard, if they don't do it, they can get sick, this can happen to you. Some cases, they get sick, actually get sick. So they do it out of fear, it's fear-based behavior. We don't, God don't want us to have fear-based behavior, he wants us to come to him by faith. That we can come boldly before the throne of grace. Not fear-based. You understand what God put, he put his spirit inside of you, that it's your party clean. You say, better buy it to you forever. Listen. I believed in the grace of God to such an extent. Can't be greater. But I believe if a man believed that Christ died for him. And he go and steal, wherever he go and steal. And he said, Holy Spirit, it's safe. He would tell him. I know some of you can handle this, because I say, religion make you feeble, or the Holy Ghost will not get involved in anything like that. See, you don't know the spirit of God. God don't see as men see. So I say some things, you believe, I'm gonna say to this poor, I don't understand, you're too rich for your blood. Hey, Paul says. Say, bow my knees. To the Father, to our Lord Jesus Christ, of whom the whole, the family in heaven and earth is named, that he would grant you according to the riches of his glory, to be strengthened with his mighty Spirit in the inner man; that Christ may dwell in your hearts by his faith, that you may be huge and long, your love may be able to comprehend with all saints what is their breadth and length and depth and height; and you may know the love of Christ which passed it knowledge, that you may be filled with all the fullness of God. See, we don't know yet how much God loves us, we think God, see. We were told and trained to believe that God loves us because we were good. Or we come and behave ourselves. God loves us before the formulation of words.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah.
Once they say, he has avenged his love on us.
Hallelujah.
That bitch is not me. Listen, he has avenged his love on us. Let me tell you, how much God loves you, David had write it. He said, I'm seeing, I'm looking through history, I'm looking in the spying glass, through the spying glass of history, and I'm seeing something. I am seeing a people to whom God whose sins are forgiven. And whose iniquities are covered. David knew what happened to him. Nathan the prophet came and told him. So I could imagine David said, but I'm seeing something whose sins are forgiven. And whose iniquities are covered. And a people to whom God will not even imbue sin. He will take no account of it. You see? This is why, one reason people are seeing the manifestation of God, because they think. I remember a, a pastor told us. He went to this conference in Holland. And the first thing in Holland you need to know. If you're gonna know smoking restaurants in Holland, it mean, if you see no smoking, it mean no smoking of marijuana. Not cigarettes. Everybody smoke in Holland. So smoking is natural to all pastors in Holland. He said, and they had this conference, now here are your testimonies, here, here's some of the testimonies. This pastor raised three dead during the week, three dead persons during the week, this one raised, this one got this one healed, the hunger, this happened, miracles, miracles, miracles. And then one of the pastors, one of the ministers approached me, he say, you know, they don't tell me to. Some people have been admired and you're being in adultery, you feel guilty and terrible, they come to the altar and be released of it. He said, in a conference of over two hundred, about two hundred pastors, he says, you're the only person that took the altar. Now, your God will sign. Yeah, I know testimony of raising the dead. See? What the devil did to us, we just fear. But if we live an old life, then we shall see miracles, we not see miracles because they're sitting in the camp. He is the Holy Ghost. Then he come in. Sin is neutralized. Let me explain, because some people didn't get it. See, this was a church thing, they think when the Holy Ghost comes, you can stop sinning. That's not how it comes. You can't, you can't feel the effect of it. The Holy Ghost neutralizes the effect of sin. Are you hearing me? Shadow of His sake, he neutralizes. So many times people judge people and beat up on them and talk all kind of ignorance, but you don't even understand the Holy Ghost, God didn't even know what you're talking about. Because he has neutralized the effect of sin. The only thing brings the troubles you because you don't know it has been neutralized and you condemn yourself and think that, oh, God, but the Holy Ghost is there.
That's the word, that's the new covenant.
That's the new covenant. Now, when you understand new covenant, you're gonna walk in power. Because you're not looking at, if I mistook it by this one, provoke me, I curse, you don't worry with that. When you understand new covenant, curse, you go tell Satan, oh, just so and so. And the power of the spirit can put them out. Okay, I time, I know, some of you say, what kind of story is this? See, they, they don't, they don't understand this new covenant. And that's why the church is so impotent. Because the spirit was there to quicken our moral anxiety and to do all the supernatural things within us. Because we think that we have to be eligible for him to live inside. We are busy trying to sweep the house every day to make it clean enough for him. You did not know that when he comes in, he is the sanitizer. Because of him, we are kept clean and holy. And if you mess up your skin, you're still clean. Are you hearing me? That the effect of it does not hurt you. Because he is there. That's why he's called the Holy Spirit, he makes holy. That's why, when God gave Peter the vision, until he said, he saw all these animals and he knew was unclean, and he says, get a rice, Peter, stay here and eat. He said, Lord, I don't eat anything that is coming around clean. And God said, don't call anything that I've sanctified come around clean. We have been sanctified by the Holy Ghost. What you do don't make you unclean anymore, are you hearing me? The only thing you can have a clean, because you think so, when you understand the Holy Ghost sanctified you, it mean even if they mess up again, he's still sanctified. That's his job. And that's the power he has to make clean. Who is it? Jehovah? Which one? Kardash. The one who was what? He makes me clean, he makes me clean, he's not, he makes me clean continually, he continually makes me clean, he, he. We know different from babies, but in the sight of God. I ain't very messing with you, you clean him? Your problem, when he mess up, he made last, you clean again? Well, he's Jehovah Kardashian, he's the one who makes us clean, he continuously makes us clean, he gasp ever, he make you clean, you're clean. We are clean. Not clean because you do right, you're clean because he makes you clean. He's Jehovah Kardashian. He makes me clean. No, no. Please understand, we in the eyes of God are people. So, so, so you understand? And you still have the people to deal with, so so save from them, some of them stumbling. You try not to mess up in front of them. So they will receive. Because they will think that you're clean. And what a tragedy to know they go and touch you. Try to divide you. Imagine somebody trying to pick up my favorite shirt because they see lame in both feet. And throw him outside, some, somebody who didn't get a new was what David said. Pick up my favorite shirt bodily and throw him outside, then David come say, where's my favorite shirt? Say, oh, um, the chief butler put him outside because his, his feet are not right. You know, chief butler is deaf. Because they say, who? Who tell you to touch my favorite shirt? Did you hear, I'm showing the mercy of God for Jonathan's sake? The kindness of God. I say kindness of God. Are you hearing this tonight? Why am I telling this? So you can have confidence in the power of God in you. So you can begin to believe that the power of God is inside of me, I don't have to be afraid. I don't have to think that I'm not worthy, I can have confidence and I can be grateful and thankful that the power of God is inside of me. Because he that comes to God must believe that he is. And is the reward of them that they're yet to seek it. Let me tell you. I want you to learn to practice the presence of the spirit. That's what you practice the presence. What do I mean by practicing the presence? Buddhist Sam says, in all thy ways. Watch me, in so thy ways. In my somewhere, I had a situation, it could be for me ten dollars. She watched the face with this bit of ice. I could say, why don't I ask the spirit? They then this person. He said, give them. He take a lot of gift. He's the last ten dollars, but he said, give them, say, take this. Or he say, Or he said, "No, they're tricking you, no one else." Said, "No, I'm not learning you, I'm not learning you," no, the Spirit never don't learn you. In everything, I mean in everything. You can't find your shoe. He would insist towards you. "Oh, it's reliable, Mrs.." "I don't like it." In all the ways, you have, this practice, practicing in everything, in everything, everything, in everything. You can't sleep when the ghost have to sleep. Or you want to talk to me? Is somebody want to tell me? Yeah, okay, I'll get him up. In other ways. So we are practicing his presence. You must believe that he is, you have to think to be true. From the night fore, you have to start thinking. "Spirit of God, it's with me." It will take time perhaps, because remember, you're not accustomed to it. When I was working at, I was living in bed for acting, I was working in, right, I was a pastor, Austin, and there's a bookstore was there at Chicken House, this. And it was during the time they had a transportation problem, situation. And every day, I would come out. And when I come out, I had two places I could go, I could go through a street or go up the road to go on a transportation, and I would stop. And say, "Holy Ghost, where the people is this morning?" And if I just felt the ghost, I turn and walk up. And I clockwork. A vic is coming, taking one. Sometime, I'm standing, I'm crawling along and I hear, walk up, walk down, so. I left on a walk. And a vic passed me, a one. It was like clockwork. I, listen, I never had transportation news. Never experienced it. Never stood up always in the road waiting for him because that's what I did. In all thy ways, all thy ways, all thy ways. So you have, we have to practice that. You see, you have to practice that, practice that. That's our first step. Tomorrow, they will show you a system and a principle that God showed you. I want to share a reason I think we should learn much stuff. Only show you the heart and mind of God. See, because many persons don't understand that. I remember telling to my cousin that I sent an angel. And he got quiet, and he said, "I probably not. Who are we to send angels?" But he thought, "I can't send angel." Now, I've sent angels over and over. Over and over, over and over. Over and over. Some of you are witnesses, you hear, and say, "A certain thing." I know people in situation, and I said, "Angel, go and help them." And do testify that somebody come with the blues, who is not even supposed to be leaving. I said, "I come to fix this." Then he gave, he said, "She want, oh, my son, I ain't hearing from him," I said, "Okay, go, your son, you're here for me, son." He said, "Why did he come home?" I said, "How much things you want?" He said, "I want him come home." I said, "Okay, go. Send an angel to bring him home." She go home, angel make him come. Next, two days, he come home. "Why you come home?" He said, "Oh, I just feel he coming home." He said, "He coming home, they crucify myself, or something, just something, just tell him come home." I know people don't know where the children are, and I said, "Send an angel." "Go, take care of child and bring him home." And I called back, "No, we didn't have for," I said, "My child home." A lady came, she said, her, um, her, her daughter's child father came in the country. And he's not even gone to see the child and bring anything for them. They're from London. I said, "Send an angel to make him go, don't worry, I'll go and carry things." She go home, and she come. She say, "I know he come." And he bring a whole set of things. So so many boys don't know how God operates. But let me show you. Could I show you Matthew, chapter nine? You wanna read a verse? Twenty twenty, you want to read twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, I want to show you something. Yes, please?
And behold, a woman which was diseased with an issue of blood twelve years came behind him and touched the hem of his garment; for she said within herself, "If I may but touch his garment, I shall be whole." But Jesus turned him about, and when he saw her, he said, "Daughter, be of good comfort; thy faith hath made thee whole; and the woman was made whole from that hour."
No, there are other references. My mom, Reverend Jesus said, he fell for to the demon, and all of that. I want to show something. This woman determined, she determined how the power of God is gonna work in her life. This woman determined how this God, how this power of God is gonna work in her life. She didn't go to God and say, "Oh, God, um, please help me." As the matter was prepared, as the Lord said to me, this woman got healed before she touched me. She received her healing before she touched me. Jesus said, "What's everything you desire, believe you receive?" And she'll have it. And because she believed it to be so, the power of God responded according to what she believed. When we get to believe the power of God is in you, the power of God will respond according to whatever you believe. You hear what I'm telling you?
Yes, sir.
The woman was this, was troubled with the issue of blood for twelve years. She came behind with a present, touched, because she had said to herself, she said within herself, "If I but touch the hem of his garment, I shall be made whole." She didn't pray, nobody can say she prayed and consult God, ask God what must do, and who we must go above, she didn't pray, she said, "Listen, I but touches the arm, I shall be made whole." Whatever you say, the Spirit is gonna do.
Hallelujah.
The power of God been released because of what you think. The power of God is not released because you're right, because you're good. The woman was, had an issue of blood, she was unclean. An unclean woman came and got a miracle because that unclean woman said within herself. You don't get more unclean a woman, whether it's your blood for twelve years, she believed for twelve years, that's unclean, she's supposed to be stoned. So you know, my life is not right. Neither was this woman. But Jesus said, "Your faith be of good comfort; your faith hath made you whole. What you believe has healed you. What you believe is what heals you." What you believe is what heals you. It's not what happens, it's what you believe. It's why you're willing to think in advance. Tomorrow, tomorrow, I'm gonna teach you the secret of believing, one of the secrets of believing, but I tell you this, the woman, she, before she touched Jesus, she said, "Believe in herself." She said, "I touch him." "I shall be made whole." The virtue could not resist leaving Jesus. Jesus could not stop the virtue from flowing. He could not stop it. I'll tell you why. Because he went into the temple and he read, "The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me." He anoint me with the what? To heal the sick. The anointing he was present in him. And anybody who believe it, the anointing would not, it's gonna come out because the anointing is present to heal. To raise the dead, the cast of devil, he said that. He has anointed me to do that. Therefore, there was an ocean on his life for that. So anybody who put the demand for that is gonna get it. I told you, wherever you believe, where you will get. You don't get, you don't get what you deserve, you get what you believe for. You can write it down, you don't get what you deserve, you get what you believe for. She did not consult with Jesus. She not tell you, "Jesus, I wonder how he meeting with you." "You know, Lord, I have this situation. I'm bleeding. I've been to all them doctor's. I ran to a broker doing a loan money. Oh, Jesus. See what you can do for me." See, Jesus, when Jesus has a blind man where you want. Where you think a blind man, what, Jesus, Jesus, who you want, he's a Messiah. You got it. The woman determined how it's gonna happen. Look at them and say, "You have to determine how it's gonna happen for you." You have to determine how your youth is gonna be renewed. You have to determine how the Spirit gonna quicken your body, how your body will be quickened, you have to determine that. You have to determine how your body gonna quicken, you have to determine it. Listen, do you hear what I mean? If you determine, you know what? I can shout, "Hallelujah" ten times, and I'll get a quick name. If you determine that, and you believe that to be so, it's gonna be so. No, I give you an example of something. If you determine that, it will be so for you. The Spirit will not say, "Well, nah," and operate like that. But this is breaking news. Because religion would make you feel, "Ah." So you think you could and you can just make the Holy Spirit where you, do you want, yes. He wants to do it. It is, it's good pleasure to give us the kingdom. The Bible says, "If you know being evil, if your son asks you for a bread, would you give him a stone? If he asks for egg, would you give him a sock? And he asks you for a fish, would you give him a scorpion? And if you know being evil, knows to give good, give stone to your children, how much more shall he give his Holy Spirit to them that ask?" How much more shall he give, Father? Watch me, he delights in us. He want us to believe something. He wants us to engage him. Because he's, he's there for that. It's the same Jesus, you know, he said, "I'm the one who healed all the diseases," is he? He said, "I renew your youth as he goes," the way, the only thing he renew, is who he didn't renew me, um, seriously, you, you, is he? When Mary said, "But how shall this thing be?" He said, "The angel say, 'Everybody, Holy Ghost.'" He just go overshadow you. He said, "Listen, he should just overshadow you, and you gonna go and see. Believe I'm living inside of you." You hear me? He just overshadow Mary. He wasn't living near Mary. He just overshadow her. And she get pregnant. He living inside of you. All Mary had to say, "Let it be." Are you hearing me? So I wanted, I did it for you, I took the responsibility off of God. Because most people think, "Well, if God wants to quicken me, and he shall quicken my mortal body, and so he has to quicken." We have to receive the quickening. Let me put it this way, you always quicken. Our job is to receive it, and we decide how we receive it. I talked long enough. Tomorrow, I'll come to you. I'm gonna stop, I'm finishing, stop.